Who is who? So I'd really appreciate it if you do that. Okay, so with that, let's get started. I'm Janet Anderson. I called to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, June 21st at 2022 at 7:30 PM. Happy solstice, everyone, and first day of summer. The open meetings law changes enacted in the New York State budget enabled us to have this meeting by video conference during an emergency declaration, and that emergency declaration was extended to July 14th. The board has agreed to meet virtually as long as circumstances allow. I expect a July meeting to be in person at 79 Bouton Street, but if the governor issues another extension, we would then meet virtually. No one is at our in-person meeting location at 79 Bouton. This meeting is being recorded. Kirsten Conrad has confirmed that the YouTube feed is active and working, and that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements fulfilled. We intend to post a recording and a transcript of this meeting to the town website, and the Zoom video will also be available on the town's YouTube channel. Joining me on this Zoom conference from the Town of Lewisboro are the members of the Planning Board, Charlene Indalaccato, Jerome Kerner, Greg LaSorsa, and Bruce Thompson. We do have a quorum, and thus we can conduct the business of the board and vote on any matters that come before the board. Also on the conference are Council Judge Seibert and I believe Keller Sessions, sorry, Jan Johansson from Keller Sessions, the planning and wetland consultant, is joining us now. Also on are the Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad and the CAC Chair John Wolf. We do have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. That's the only time we expect to take public comments, and I will describe the process before we begin the public hearing in just a few minutes. The public has joined muted until that point. We ask any applicants who are not engaging in dialogue to mute their lines. This will help everyone hear over the inevitable background noises. And to ease the recording of our votes as we go through our meeting, I will poll board members individually. So with that, let's get started. First item on our agenda is calendar number 09-22 PB, calendar number 17-22 WP, calendar number 10-22 SW. This is the Indian Hills Water System at Apache Circle, Cotonaw, New York, an application for construction of a water treatment facility and three new wells. This applicant was before us in April, and we opened and closed a public hearing in May. And we have a resolution in front of us that Jan, I'll ask you to briefly review.
Yep, just give me a moment, just bringing it up.
Okay. And I should say, I see Sean Peters on for the applicant.
Just a second. Okay, yes, as requested by the board, we prepared a resolution for site development plan approval, wetland activity permit approval on a stormwater permit for for the Indian Hills Water Treatment Plant upgrade. This property is at Apache Circle, located in Apache Circle in the R2A zoning district. It consists of 8.2 acres. It is currently developed with a communal well that serves the Indian Hills subdivision. It's being upgraded to comply with Westchester County Department of Health standards and requirements. It does include the construction of a building to house the new equipment and the exploration of new wells, some of which are located within the wetland proper and the wetland buffer. Outside of the building, a water storage tank and reclaimed water tank will be installed. Other site improvements include site grading, stormwater management, pavement for building access and underground utilities. The wetland that's on the property is regulated by the Town of Lewisboro and the New York State D E C. The Town of Lewisboro has 150-foot wetland buffer, the D E C of 100-foot wetland adjacent area. Disturbance mainly associated with the wells is proposed within the wetland itself. Disturbance associated with the transmission lines in the building are located within the buffer. They will require an Article 24 freshwater wetland permit from the D E C. They have provided a wetland mitigation plan, which includes removal of invasive plants, restoration of disturbed areas with native seed mixes, installations of trees and shrubs, and a stormwater management practice to capture and treat the stormwater runoff from the added impervious surfaces. They do require coverage under the New York State D E C Speedy's General Permit. They've provided the SWIP and the N O Y for our review. Project's been reviewed by the building inspector. There's a memo in the file. Public hearing was open and closed on May 17th, 2022. This is a type-two action under SECR. The conditions associated with the resolution are mainly compliance with any outstanding comments from my office, approval from ACHARC, approval from the Westchester County Department of Health, obtaining the Speedy's General Permit from the D E C and obtaining the D E C Article 24 freshwater wetland permit. I'm just noticing in condition two, bullet point four, missing the S in New York State D E C. I'll make that correction. Other than that, there's no other other conditions to be satisfied prior to signing of the plans, and I believe the conditions following that are really pro forma. There's nothing unique. They're all standard conditions of the board.
And I should say that the resolution was distributed to the board members prior to the meeting, so if there are no questions, I would look for a motion to approve the resolution. Jerome?
Yeah, I would approve the resolution as prepared.
And amended, right?
And amended.
And Charlene?
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll poll the board. Charlene?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And Bruce?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so the resolution is approved as amended by, as Jan noted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, Sean. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 07-22 PB, the Walkabout Country Club Harder Lot Line Change. This is on Carriage House Road in Walkabout, New York. This is the application for lot line change. This came before us in March and April. We had a building inspector memo that sent the applicant to the Z B A, and we have gotten a resolution from the Z B A that approved the variance. So with that, we did ask Jan to prepare a negative declaration and a resolution, and again, that's been been distributed to the board. So Jan, do you want to go over that briefly?
Sure, this is a resolution for final subdivision plot approval associated with a lot line change. It comes with it a negative declaration of significance under SECR. The project includes a lot line reconfiguration between the Walkabout Country Club and Teresa E. Hardar. And it basically involves the conveyance of land of 4.8 acres being transferred from the Hardar property to the Walkabout Country Club. The Walkabout Country Club consists of 42.47 acres of land. The Hardar property consists of 48.63 acres of land. That property is developed with a single-family residence, a pool, and other ancillary improvements. Both parcels in the R4A zoning district. The Walkabout Country Club parcel will increase to 47.27 acres, and the Hardar property will decrease to 43.82 acres. This project will result in no form of land disturbance or construction. It's simply the conveyance of land from one parcel to the other. The Walkabout Country Club is considered a legally existing nonconforming use. This project was reviewed by the building inspector who determined that that conveyance resulted in an expansion of a nonconforming use and referred it to the zoning board of appeals who granted a variance, not even a variance, is an approval. There's a provision in the zoning code that allows the zoning board to approve expansions of nonconforming uses. That was issued May 28th, 2022. It's an unlisted action under SECR. And as I mentioned, this resolution encompasses a negative declaration, which we've also prepared. There's really, there's no outstanding comments from my office, and the conditions are pro forma.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to issue the negative declaration and to approve the resolution.
I'd move.
Thank you, Charlene. And Bruce?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will poll the board. Charlene?
Michael?
Jan? Oh, Michael, sorry.
Yes, I just want to be sure the resolution, the second whereas clause on the first page of the resolution means says what Jan and Judd means it to say. It says that the Walkabout Club parcel is undeveloped. I don't care if that's, if that's what they mean it to say, that's fine. I just want the board to know that it is a golf course. There are tees and greens. There's irrigation and the usual amenities. There's no major structures. So if that's what Jan and Judd mean by undeveloped, meaning no major buildings, then that's fine, but I just want to make sure it says what they mean it to say. Thank you.
What clause was that, Michael?
The second whereas clause on the first page. It says that the club parcel is undeveloped. And do you mean by that, that there's no major structures? If so, that's correct. But I mean, it is, it's not wooded. It's fairways and greens and tees.
Okay, I think we should strike the word is undeveloped.
So what would that then say, the whereas clause?
The Walkabout Country Club parcel currently consists of 42.47 acres of land and is identified on the Town of Lewisboro tax maps as Sheet 25 block so-and-so.
Is that satisfactory, Michael?
Yes, again, I didn't care. I just wanted to be accurate to what they wanted it to say, and the board understands it to me.
Great. Yeah, I guess I had taken it as the parcel to be conveyed is not developed, but good.
Okay, that's what it.
That's what, that was the intent.
That was the intent, but it's a little
All right, so any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will now poll the board. Charlene?
Aye. Do we get a second?
Yes, we did. Yes, that was Bruce. Jerome?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
And I also say aye, so the so the motion to issue the neg deck and approve the resolution is carries. If nothing else, we'll move on to the next item. Sure. The next item on our agenda is the Borough Cafe. This is calendar number 05-22 PB. This is at H73 Route 35 in Cross River, New York, and it's the application for change of use from office to restaurant and yoga studio.
Oh, screw up. No way.
This was before us in March and April. We opened and closed a public hearing in May with giving 10 days for email comments after that, after we closed the public portion of the public hearing. And we did receive more comments on traffic and safety concerns. As discussed last month, we have received some minor changes to the plans, which we reviewed. So and those were basically implementing the one-way on the exit onto 35. I think that was, and there was one other minor change. So are there any any comments or questions? Yes, Charlene?
Well, thank you for removing the trucks. I noticed that today. I have one question. The yoga is going to be ended at 5:00 PM also, as with the business hours of the of the cafe?
Whatever's in the, whatever's in our business plan is what's going to happen.
Okay, I just surprised that you had no evening classes for the yoga.
And that's, that is what the business plan states. It's that they're the same hours of operation as the as the cafe, which I believe closed at 5:00 PM.
Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
I do have one minor question, I guess, and that is that we've heard a lot about safety and traffic, and I know that it's not incumbent on the applicant at all to, I mean, to handle the whole 35 crosswalks, anything. But I was curious about if people are worried about more traffic on North Salem Road, whether there would be any willingness to maybe put a walking path or flagstones things from, you know, on your property from 35 to the parking lot or to the entrance drive, so that if somebody was walking, they and managed to get there, they wouldn't be walking on North Salem Road. I know that we're not expecting, we're expecting most people to drive, but but if this happens, I just wondered if that would be a way to ease some of the safety concerns that we did hear about.
We can take that into consideration. I don't, yeah, not sure. We haven't really looked at that yet.
Yeah, I do think that's the lesser of the concern is that stretch between 35 going south up the, up to their driveway. The bigger concern is the walkway from the high school to 35, where there are driveways and and as school lets out, there's a lot of traffic from school students that are exiting onto North Salem Road going south. So ultimately, I think a sidewalk along, you know, along that western east boundary of the North Salem Road would be a critical consideration. But again, as you say, that's off-site, and it's not the applicant's responsibility. But I think as a planning board, we should push for that if this project goes ahead.
I agree. I mean, again, I don't think we can ask the applicant to either do that or wait until that's done, but I think I think that's an important message that we need to continue to to push. Okay, we do have, so if there are no more comments, we do have a resolution. Jan, perhaps I'll ask you to run through the highlights of this again.
Sure. Just trying to find it. Would you like me to go through the changes from the last time or go just go through the entire resolution?
I think just the changes.
Okay, great. The change is really dealt with the operational conditions. I don't think there are any other changes to the conditions to be satisfied prior to the signing of the plans. The biggest one being the Health Department. I believe that ACHARC has approved this. The only outside agency approval besides ACHARC was the Health Department for the waters. We await their decision, and that's been made a condition of the approval. The operational conditions, I'm just going to go over real quickly each one of them so everybody's aware. Condition 20 just refers to section 220-43, which are the town's requirements for limited service carryout restaurants with more than 10 seats. Instead of reiterating all of them, we're just identifying the chapter where they can be found. Condition 21 states outdoor seating shall be limited to 12 seats in the location shown on the approved plan. 12 was proposed, 12 is being approved, and that's just denoted in condition 21. Outdoor, condition 22, outdoor seating shall be operated in strict compliance with code section 220-16, which is the session relating to outdoor seating. Condition 23, and I believe this is a new condition or has been revised. The applicant stated hours of operation for both the cafe and the yoga studio is 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. Condition number 24, I believe this is a new condition, as discussed at the last meeting. Any special event shall take place indoors and/or on the proposed deck. I believe that was a question raised by the board, and I believe that was the applicant's response, that it'd be either indoors or on the deck or both. Condition 25.
I don't know how to get back on. I'm still on speaker, but.
Condition 25, there was some concern about special events, so this indicates any special event. Any special events which are expected to attract 50 or more number of persons to this site at any one time shall require prior notification, written notification from the applicant to the Town of Lewisboro Building Department and Police Department. Notification shall be in written form and shall be sent registered mail at least one week in advance of the event. So they're going to have an event where they expect 50 or more people. They notify in writing the Building Department and the Police Department of that event one week in advance of the event. 26, I believe this was previously included, overnight parking of commercial vehicles or trailers shall be prohibited. 27, previously proposed on-street parking shall be prohibited unless authorized by the town board. And 28 is new and results from conversations at the last meeting. Any change in use, expansion or intensification of use or change in ownership shall require approval from the planning board. Those are the operational conditions.
I'll need to get it approved.
Is that a question? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, I thought I heard something from your end there. Okay. If I would look for a motion to approve the resolution, which Jan has just reviewed with us.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Greg. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jerome? Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll poll the board. Charlene?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
And I also say aye, so the resolution is approved. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is an extension of time request. This is calendar number 07-21 PB, Cross River Pharmacy, 890 Route 35, Cross River, New York. This is an application for a change of use. And I am not sure who is on for this. Okay, I see you, Elaine. Yes. Do you want to unmute yourself?
Yeah, hi, good evening. I'm Elaine Feldman, owner of Cross River Pharmacy, and the board did graciously give us a permit of use, a permit for a change of use was approved last fall. It has expired unfortunately due to just, you know, with COVID and the Westchester County Department of Health lost some of our records that we submitted. We have resubmitted records, and we were requesting if we could a six-month change of use extension for this. It has already been granted, and we're just hoping to get an extension. I have all my things in place, the plumber and electrical, you know, once we get our permits from the Board of Health and the D E C. We submitted water records, so I'm working on the septic records. But everything's lined up once we have all of our permits, so we're just hoping to get an extension so that we can proceed with our getting the permits and building a pharmacy and state-of-the-art lab in Cross River at that new location.
Great, thank you. So we would look for a six-month extension, which would take it out to October 19th, 1922. Does anyone want to make a motion for that?
I'd move. I'd move that we approve a six-month extension as described.
And Charlene, were you going to second?
Yes.
Okay, any any further discussion? Okay, I'll poll the board. Charlene?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
And I also say aye, so the extension of time request is approved to 10, 1922.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck with the DOH.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. This is calendar number 03-13 PB, calendar number 03-16 WP. This is Silver Mine Preserve at Silver Mine Drive and Lockwood Road, South Salem, New York. It's an application for subdivision, wetland activity, and stormwater permits for the construction of a 13-lot subdivision. Okay, so as a reminder, the purpose of a public hearing is for the board to hear the concerns and comments of the public. Comments should be addressed to the planning board, not to the applicant. A public hearing is not meant to be a dialogue, and in general, the board will not respond to comments at a public hearing, although we may issue corrections to misunderstandings. The board will take public input into consideration as we continue to review the matter before us. Members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewissborrowgov.com. The board has invited and received public comments by email before this meeting. To speak at this hearing, please raise your Zoom hand by clicking on the raise hand icon on the bottom of the screen, or if you are on a phone, press star nine. We will ask speakers to give their name and address and ask that the comments be kept short. And if someone has already made a comment similar to what you were going to make, please consider whether or not you really need to say the same thing again. The format for a public hearing, I will give a brief introduction to the application. The applicant will give a summary of the project. The Planning Board advisors will review any comments. Then we'll have the public comment period, and then a discussion by the planning board. I did want to say a bit more on this application. The Planning Board decided to conduct a public hearing on the final subdivision plot submitted by Silver Mine Preserve, even though we could have waived a public hearing. The decision to hold a public hearing was because of the passage of time since the, between the issuance of the preliminary subdivision approval in 2017 and the submission of the final subdivision plat. The applicants have requested and have been granted extensions of their preliminary subdivision approval before they submitted their final plan. We have, in advance of tonight's public hearing, received comments asking the board to deny the final approval for this project. The board, however, has taken several substantive steps that focuses tonight's public hearing on final plan details, not on a decision to deny final approval. In 2017, the Planning Board granted preliminary plat approval for this project. The term preliminary may be somewhat confusing. In the subdivisional approval process, it is actually a very significant step. Preliminary approval conclusively establishes the primary characteristics and design features of Preliminary approval conclusively establishes the primary characteristics and design features of a subdivision. It cannot be simply cast away. In addition, the planning board served as the lead agency for environmental review of this project and in twenty seventeen issued a detailed negative declaration finding that this subdivision will not have a significant negative impact upon the environment. A great deal of time went into that decision and the planning board solicited comments from interested agencies and parties, including, among others, the town highway superintendent, the Vista Fire Volunteer Fire Department, the first taxing district of the city of Norwalk because of the proximity of the city of Norwalk watershed, the external Lewisboro School District, the Conservation Advisory Council, the Open Space and Preserves Advisory Committee, Parks and Rec Advisory Council and neighbor property owners. And there was a three-session public hearing held in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. We have also received comments questioning the conservation subdivision format or clustering of this project. This is a permitted form of subdivision design. In the case of this project, clustering was the result of design changes sought by the planning board during the preliminary phase. This cluster design was endorsed by the CAC and was allowed to be used for this project based upon express authorization from the town board, which is required whenever clustering is used. The town board approved this plan in May twenty seventeen. In sum, although we want the public to see the project in its final form, the scope of the planning board's authority at this stage is limited. The planning board reviews applications in accordance with the town code and the responsibility for that code rests with the town board. That said, this cluster design, the proposed use of the property and the projects impacts have been thoroughly vetted. So with that, I see Jerry is on. Jerry, do you want to give a few introductory comments?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thanks very much. Jerry Tortorella of Hockman Tortorella and Wexton and work counsel for the applicant. And I want to introduce other team members who are joining us this evening. We have Ed Delaney from Bibbo Associates and Beth Evans from Evans Associates. They have both worked on this project. Actually, Ed, in his prior life, we actually reviewed this site and its capacity as a representative of the Health Department also many years ago. And they have both worked on this site throughout the approval process since we first were before the board. I think it was in twenty sixteen. Ed, if you can, if you would just put up the subdivision plat so we can just show the layout. As the chairwoman indicated, it is a thirteen lot subdivision. We actually started with a twelve lot subdivision on fifty-five acres of property. And at that time, we did not own an additional lot that's been added to the subdivision. As we went through the process in trying to lay out the subdivision and meet some of the urgings and suggestions of the planning board and the planners at the time, there was a strong push that we figure out a way to make a through road through to Silvermine. And there were concerns initially about the accessway from Lockwood Road. So over the course of time, our client actually was able to acquire a second parcel of approximately two acres to make the subdivision property a little bit over fifty-seven acres. And that enabled us to improve the access and also to minimize disturbance to wetland buffer area. As a consequence, the subdivision went from a twelve lot subdivision to a thirteen lot subdivision, the thirteenth lot being an already approved and improved building lot. Ed, we can, are you able to share the?
No, I can't. I'm trying. Kirsten, can you do it on your end?
You have all the permission to share you want.
Yeah, but somehow it didn't come through on this on this desktop. I don't know why. I'm at home here and I sent it this afternoon. I tested it earlier and I can't find it. So.
Kirsten, do I have authority to share?
You do.
Okay, let me see if I can make that work. If you can tell me if you can see the subdivision map. Since I'm not able to tell what you can view. Is it showing?
Not yet.
Don't know where mine is.
Hopefully that will work.
Looks like it. Yep.
Set up? Okay. And I'm sorry about the scale, but it's a large piece of property and it's a little difficult to be able to enlarge it. But what where we have, just so I can orient people, is we have Lockwood Road here, which is on the south. We have Silvermine Road on the north here. And then this is the combined subdivision parcel. The original subdivision piece was as I'm outlining here. And then we added this additional already existing building lot that's already been, that already had improvements on it to the subdivision. So in its entirety, it's these two parcels combined. The plan is to have access from Lockwood Road. We have thirteen building lots. And in those those parcels, we will be constructing single-family residences and they'll be served by septics and wells. There'll be a private road that's constructed, which I'm indicating here. It's a dead-end road. There are some lots that will be served by common driveways. Again, a technique that's used in order to minimize the amount of disturbance and grading that's necessary throughout the site. And this has really been the theme throughout the development of this subdivision. The chairwoman mentioned that this is a conservation subdivision. And I saw a number of the comments that came in from members of the public and there were concerns about the fact that this was not adhering to existing zoning. And I want to emphasize that the lots are permitted to be developed at the lower acreage as a conservation subdivision, but the number of lots that is proposed is no more than the number that we would be able to develop if we were to have done this as a conventional or traditional subdivision. So there's a control and a limitation that's built into the law that permits conservation subdivisions that says that the lot count is equal to the lot count that you would be able to build were you able to develop these lots in a conventional manner. In order to get that lot count, we had to go through an exercise of demonstrating what a conventional subdivision would bear. And it was at least thirteen building lots, and that's why you see thirteen building lots on this plan. Over the course of developing the subdivision, it became apparent that this area centrally located in the property was really very good developable land. And there was a strong urging and recommendation by the planners and by the the planning board and by the Conservation Advisory Commission, and it was supported by the town board, that we tried to create and establish basically swaths of open space to envelop the developed area. What that does is enable to keep development away from wetlands that are on the open space piece. Up in the north side, we have a state wetland. And then we have a couple of other wetlands over on the east and on the west side and also a little bit towards the south. And in doing that, we are actually minimizing disturbance to land. I mean, this is fifty-seven acres of property. The disturbance is approximately fourteen acres. We are preserving forty point eight acres in the open space. And the idea behind the preservation of this open space is that it will be dedicated to the Westchester Land Trust in order to be preserved in perpetuity and utilized for public access purposes. That was a very important consideration among the Open Space Committee in the town and I think very important to the town board and the CAC as we were going through the design of this subdivision. We have had extensive conversations with the Westchester Land Trust. The Westchester Land Trust is on record from the early stages of this development of its willingness to be involved and participate in this project and accept dedication of the land and assist in creating publicly accessible trails. So all of that has been discussed and, you know, a kind of an integral part of the proposal that we have before the board. The road will be a private road. What that means is that it will be owned and maintained by a homeowners association that will be responsible for its maintenance, its cleaning and its restoration and repairs. There are stormwater basins that are proposed as part of the subdivision. We have one, two, three, four stormwater basins. They are designed to treat stormwater and particularly in the north side here to address and protect this wetland on the north side from sedimentation that has that has occurred in the past. Those stormwater basins will be actually maintained by the homeowners association as well. It will be responsible to monitor and inspect and maintain wetland mitigation that has been designed as part of this project for some minor wetland buffer encroachment. The encroachment of the wetland buffer is into the local wetland. There's a state wetland on this property, but there is no disturbance of the wetland buffer that's associated with the state wetland. We talked, I mentioned the drainage and the stormwater improvements. I want to mention also that we have in here, and it's maybe difficult to see, but this little section right here is actually a small parking area that the applicant will construct and will be utilized, made available and utilized by the land trust and anyone who's using the publicly available and publicly accessible trails. So we're not looking to impose the burden of people using the trails on the existing road networks. We are actually providing parking in this location for people and there will be an easement that's created and that allows public access in order to be able to access the public trail system. Another feature of the subdivision that confers benefit on the community is the creation of or the construction of an underground fire storage tank for water storage purposes. An easement will be given to the fire department for the use of that tank, but that tank will be installed by the developer and will be maintained by the homeowners association. So the cost of that is not borne by the general public or by the town itself. That's an overview of the subdivision. I, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those questions, but you are correct in saying that this has been the subject of extensive review and discussion. And it has been pending before the board for quite some time and really been, I think, we've exhausted you know, all avenues of making it the best plan that it can be.
Thank you. So I don't know, Jan, if you have any comments that you want to offer at this point?
I don't think so. We have a, we have a comment memo that probably dates back from last meeting. There's a couple of open items that need to be resolved. There were conditions of the preliminary plat. We're working with with Beth's office and Bibbo's office on just addressing those, their details at this point. One was the mitigation for the stormwater runoff coming from the end of Silvermine Drive. The applicant had agreed to to provide a stormwater practice on the open space parcel for mitigating runoff from coming from the cul-de-sac there before it hits the wetland. We had approved, or the board had approved the concept plan as part of the preliminary and that concept needs to develop into a more, you know, more of an engineering plan. Now, the other stuff is just you know, we had reviewed the SWP. Think we had indicated at the last meeting that we had no further comments on the stormwater pollution prevention plan. So we're just, you know.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I see we have two hands up. Rhonda, could you give us your name and address and comments, please? You're muted still.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm Rhonda Shaw. I live at eighteen Silvermine Drive. I share a border with plot number one. I'm not sure how many houses actually share borders with the planned plots. So I find the impact is meaningful to our lifestyle and our investment in this house. When I look at the map, I would appreciate some clarity if you can give that on that little swath between plot one and the border of the entire fifty-seven acres, because that's what I share with it. And I would like to know how that strip, it's between, you know, I, yes, right there. How, who can access that strip? That is a lot line that has our pool and our pool fence and our backyard and where we spend a lot of our life. And it would be distressing if that walkway was not made available just to a single two or four acre homeowner and their family, but to anyone in the walking trails or in the development. Are we going to be out there hearing, you know, commentary, having people walking by, potentially having their dogs run into our yard? Like, what are we looking forward to having that shared lot line? And why plot number one had to be there, given the size of this development is unknown to me, because that's really aggressive, I think, considering the reduced size of the acreage. We didn't buy this house and spend the, you know, meaningful and highest taxes in the United States in this Westchester County to then be forced to endure, you know, reduced acreage land holdings, ongoing construction for years as on-demand building. You know, I looked at the builder's website and they still have unsold properties. So now that we're working from home and spending time at home and we get to hear all this natural forest, you know, being felled and all this construction, very concerning. So what is the plan for that area?
Thank you. I hear your concerns. So you're concerned about noise, construction? And
Intrusion.
And and people. Okay, thank you. The next person with the hand up I see is I'm sorry, I have to get closer to my screen. Olas?
Go ahead and give us right, your address too, please.
Yes, hi. Olas Karianis. I go by she/her. I am at Five Serenity Place. So I would like to thank the board for holding this hearing. I understand that this hearing almost did not even happen. Even though this project's last public hearing was almost six years ago and I get the reasoning that that hearing was uneventful. I would like to commend Greg LaSorsa as the lone voice that advocated for our right to a hearing. The average stay in a home in America is about seven years. So I'm sure that I'm not alone in saying that six years is too long to not renew public hearings and to let current neighbors weigh in. In the years that have elapsed since the hearing, we have seen two new presidents, a global pandemic and economic upheaval that has completely transformed the real estate market of the country, state and this town. To assume that this project and the community response to this project can be frozen in time is irresponsible. These hearings are an important democratic function that allows community stakeholders to have their questions answered and to make their voices heard. By holding these meetings, the worst that can occur is that you waste your time listening to a vocal minority. But by skipping them, you steal from your constituents and neighbors their voice in a democratic process. I urge you to restart this process, to hold the hearings that happened seven years ago today with the actual and current stakeholders. I'd also like to say that I have many concerns about this project. The developers have pushed the boundaries of what is permissible in many aspects of this project from the acreage of each property to the sign that they use to post these hearings, which was more than ten feet from the roadway, to seeking to have no public hearing at all for over six years to develop this property. All of these things may seem like minor acts and that's true to an extent, but I worry when they start building, they'll just continue this practice. Our little rural neighborhood gets its charm from the wetlands that surround it, the wildlife that inhabits it and the area of unlandscaped wilderness. the wildlife that inhabits it, and the area of unlandscaped wilderness that supports that animal life. I worry that this project, developing thirteen new houses, will permanently change the nature of the neighborhood, contribute to the degradation of wildlife lands, and disrupt the lives of its current residents. I want this board to consider the permanent nature of these changes and to weigh that appropriately. I ask this board give strict scrutiny to every part of the plan to ensure that it fully complies with the law, not just basically complies, but follows the letter of the law and the spirit of the law and the laws which were put in place to protect our little town's charm, the feature that makes this property so desirable for folks to develop it. I hope that the developer, in seeing the specialness of this place, that they seek to conserve its specialness. But most importantly, I ask that you, this board and the developers, work to regain our trust. Trust once lost can be retrieved, but it requires conscious work. Listen to us. Listen to your current neighbors. Listen to your constituents and listen to us with the generosity that you would give to your siblings, to your parents, to your friends. Answer our questions honestly and completely. Follow the law, both in the letter and the spirit. Thank you.
Thank you, Olas. Okay, I think the person, next person with the hand up is Mary. Do you want to unmute yourself?
Hi, my name's Mary Testani. I live at eighty-six Lockwood Road. So I'm down the road from the entrance on Lockwood. Ms. Tortorella mentioned that they had looked at having a road that was a through fair with an exit on Silver Mine, and then she, I don't see it on the map. I remember being at the hearing where they mentioned that, and I don't see that anything was done with that. So was there any resolution with that, or?
Yes, so the plan is as you currently see it, where there is a entrance only from Lockwood. It does not continue through the, it was felt that the the wetland that was at the, that would have to be crossed to get to Silver Mine would be too significant. So that, the, it is a dead-end street now, not a through street.
So they couldn't, oh, because there's houses over there further. They couldn't go through there. Okay. So that's going to be the traffic, thirteen houses in and out on Lockwood, then?
Yes.
And that wasn't considered by the DOT, by the traffic? I don't know what you call it when it's local.
Yeah, we did it. We did it. There was a traffic study and they looked at the difference in, I wasn't on the board at that point, but they did look at the expected peak load changes, and it was determined to be not significant. Okay, Stacy, if you want to give us your address, please?
Sure. So, so good evening. My address is Five Serenity Place, and I use they pronouns in public. Am I all ready to start? Awesome. Okay, so I've already had the opportunity to speak with many of my neighbors, and I know they've submitted a lot of really great letters capturing some of our collective concerns. So I'm not going to focus on that. I just want to focus more on a procedural point in my, in my address. I do think it's really important that we follow process because that's what leads to integrity and decisions. And as I understand our town code, and I'm new here, so I don't know it very well yet, that subdividing land is a multi-stage process that begins with a preliminary plat, and that that reason is to make sure that all of the stakeholders, including residents, have the facts before they make decisions. And as I read it, chapter one ninety-five dash fifteen of our code says plats expire after six months or eighteen months with extension. And so I get that you said in your comments, so thank you for mentioning that, that they have received approvals, but I just don't know why they've received approvals for what looks like on paper for five years, which seems quite more than the eighteen months that are, that the town code expresses. And that to me is a problem, because I do think, as others have expressed, so much has changed. The land, the roads, laws, and most important, stakeholders. And so I do feel a little saddened that I wasn't here or had the opportunity to be here in 2017 when the hearings happened. So I couldn't ask the real questions that I wanted to ask. I heard the building inspectors have changed several times. I think the company developing this land isn't even the one who originally submitted the preliminary plat. So it's hard for me to understand how what's being proposed today can be considered an extension of that initial application. And that's why, to me, my fundamental point is I think the preliminary plat should be considered expired. And I think anybody developing the land should start the process over. And that particular point's important to me, because I think if we started over with the stakeholders today versus the stakeholders then, I think we would come to a different decision about the number thirteen. And that's where I'm coming from, is I don't think that number is appropriate. I get it's private land. It can be developed on. I don't have a choice. We all don't have a choice about that. But I have looked over the plans, and I have a lot of questions about, based on the codes that I've sent an email, and I'm not going to recite them here in Boreywell, but that there are a lot of codes that seem to be, it seems to me this is a way to get around the fact that this land is primarily wetland, wetland buffer, and vegetated sloped land. And this, to me, does not seem like something in our best interest. It seems in the developer's best interest, and I wish we had the opportunity for more robust public hearings with current stakeholders. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I will say, I believe that we're superseding
With regard to the extensions, the provisions with regard to the extension of the preliminary subdivision approval are driven by New York State, New York State Enabling Legislation, which at one time did cap the number of extensions, the time of the extensions for preliminary approval. That, that limitation was eliminated and gives the board the authority to do what it has done over the time that elapsed between the grant of preliminary approval in 2017 and today. As it has with other preliminary approvals, preliminary subdivision approvals within the town of Lewisboro. So I just want to clarify that those extensions were, in fact, in accordance with, with New York State law.
Thank you. Thank you, Jed. Okay. Let's see, Rhonda, you have your hand up again. Is there something, if you have a new? Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a mistake. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I also want to reiterate that I'm very grateful that this hearing is being held, because it's very important. So thank you to the board for doing this. I just wanted to ask also with these walking trails and this dedication of land for town use, that comes with expenses. Is that already covered? Because there's, as I pointed out in my written comments that I sent in, there's a lot of expenses with keeping parkland and walking trails, as in the enforcement of proper use, appropriate hours, garbage, you know, presence of animals and, and I saw the parking. Thank you for highlighting the parking when that was reviewed. But doesn't this gift to the town also come with a lot of expenses? And is that able to be kept up? Because, you know, I'm just concerned that this is a gift with strings attached in a way, and not sure the town is prepared to do that. We have many town projects that don't seem to be finished yet. So just wanted to raise that as well. And I just also wanted to say that back in 2016, I was present at those meetings and raised my concerns about sharing the lot line with plot one. So, you know, that was not acted on and any mitigants were not codified as far as they were spoken at those meetings, but I didn't see them codified anywhere. And so happy to be corrected if they exist, but, you know, there were some, you know, mention made, or we'll put up some kind of tree barrier, all kinds of things. And I don't know if I, like I said, that swath of land, not clear what's happening with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I will just make one clarification. So you mentioned this going to the town. The parcel is actually going to Westchester Land Trust, and I believe they are, you know, only willing to take it if they believe that they have the the capability to continue to maintain it and and really handle it in the way that that's appropriate for the preserves that they want to handle as part of the Westchester Land Trust. So, okay. I don't see any other comments at this point. Any other raised hands? I think we are still from the applicant waiting for both responses to the building inspector letter and the design of the stormwater facility, as Jan mentioned earlier. So I think in light of that, we probably should carry over the public hearing till the next, to our next meeting, which will be July nineteenth. But, and actually, I'll ask Jerry if you could stop screen sharing so we can see each other again. Great, thank you. That we can probably, I guess I'd look for consensus among the board whether we're ready to ask for a resolution to be prepared or to be started at least for the next meeting. We do have one major, I think, decision that we need to discuss, which is the the recreational fee and whether the the trails and the gift of the, this open space to Westchester Land Trust. I shouldn't say the gift, the transfer to Westchester Land Trust will satisfy that and, and under which, under what conditions we might want to imply or impose in order to make sure that it does actually satisfy those conditions. Jerry, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. So I do want to be heard on the issues of, you know, the design of that treatment device at the end of Silver Mine, you know, on the property, but at the end of Silver Mine. I was under the impression that that was something that we could deal with as a condition of the approval. I don't think it's terribly complicated design. I don't know if Ed has any thoughts about that. I'd invite him to say it. But I don't, I did not think that that was something that you were waiting for in order for us to move the process along. And the comments that we received from the building inspector, which were recently provided to us, the engineer's office also took a look at those comments and does not see any aspect with respect to which we would not be able to satisfactorily address the building inspector's comments. So it's, you know, in my experience, it's customary to put those kinds of items or make them conditions of the approval, as opposed to, you know, prolonging an approval process. I mean, I understand that there are new people who live in the community, but the comments that have been made tonight are very similar to the comments that were made to the board back in 2016 and 2017. I haven't heard anything new in this round of comments that were not heard before. And the reason I point that out is because I want it to be clear on the record that the deliberations of the board and the considerations of the board did keep those factors and issues in mind. And the environmental review was focused on those concerns about the subdivision. So it's not as if, you know, this originally went through very quickly with no real review. I mean, it was a very detailed review. There were many sessions of public hearing. There were long nights. I remember them. There was a lot of discussion about various issues, about the through road, about whether conservation subdivision was the way to go. I mean, our client originally started this and really did want to have a conventional subdivision, wanted oversized lots, but was really urged, I think, by planning authorities to pursue the conservation subdivision. And truthfully, what it does is it really does put the development on the portions of the property where the development belongs. Right? There are the sections of the property that require the least amount of disturbance of slopes. Most of the disturbance is of slopes less than five, less than fifteen percent. Other very, very good soils in the area to support the drainage infrastructure, as well as the septic systems. There was an ability to create some protection around wetland and wetland buffers and to create the opportunity for some public access to the property. I mean, this property is kind of part of a corridor of open space, and it was kind of a missing piece. And I think that there was a strong desire and a belief. I mean, the town board made a finding that it was in the town's interest to have a conservation subdivision, so that there could be the protection of the open space and an ability to create a trail system. So, you know, I would urge the board to move on. I think that anything that's outstanding in terms of details can be dealt with as a, as a condition of the approval, and we certainly would stipulate to those conditions and accept those conditions.
Thank you, Jerry. I just want to say that I think that was a comment from Jan, and I'd look to him to say whether those responses, you know, should be obtained before, before we go to, obtained prior to getting the final resolution or made conditions of the resolution.
It's the board's call. I mean, they were conditions of the preliminary plat. They were specified in the preliminary resolution, I believe, as needing to be required before, when they make application for the final plat. The building inspector comment is obviously new. I don't think that it's, it's going to be difficult to address that comment. So it's totally the board's call. I don't have a position one way or the other. It's just that it was specified in the, I believe it was specified in the resolution of the preliminary plat that they provide details on Silver Mine mitigation. It was in a prior memo of ours. I don't have, I don't have a strong position either, whatever you like.
Okay, Jerome?
Well, if you're, if you're up for planning board comments, I'd like to, I'd like to add that. I'd like to suggest that I agree with Geraldine about those details could be handled with stipulations and that we've heard the public, if there are more comments. I'd like to hear them, but if we've heard from the public, I think we, I recommend we close the hearing. I do acknowledge that there are, there are changes in the adjacent owners, but there hasn't, there's no change in the land. The land is the land. The planning board had looked at the land, planned, planning board had considered the best possible use. There was, as was stated earlier, there was a plan provided for conventional development as per, as per the code. And the cluster reflects the maximum number that could be put on that property. And I'm sure anybody could recognize that there's less impact by doing it as a, as a cluster with smaller lots. And by the way, I think that the developer sacrifices probably dollars by having smaller lots. I think thirteen larger lots could probably sell for more than, although I don't agree entirely in that the adjacent land being open and available for trails is very attractive. And the trails are an interesting fact, because they exist already. So those adjacent landowners must already be impacted, not only by walking, but I understand there are ATVs and vehicle, you know, kids doing all sorts of things without any kind of supervision, that could be more of a problem, incredibly more, than having it owned by the land trust with protection and maintenance that would be on those trails. So I think all in all, it's a win-win situation for the town, the environment, and the adjacent landowners. If there are screening necessary, I'm sure that the developer who has a sensitivity to not only the neighborhood, but also would benefit his property as well to create the proper screening. We can look into that as we progress here. So I would move that we close the public hearing and handle whatever we need to administratively.
Okay. Well, I do see two, two hands. two hands again, and it looks like Rhonda, like, do you have additional comments?
Yes, I want to say that the the remarks from this Torture Applicants Council, I'm sorry, just don't want to get that name wrong, that nothing's changed is is not right. It's not just the stakeholders. With COVID and working from home, now we're home. And this, we are here, many of us, 24/7. The amount of delivery vehicles and people getting serviced by Amazon and and takeout food and all that kind of stuff has greatly increased over the past two years beyond what the initial analysis showed. So I don't agree with that. I also raised my remarks in 2016 to no avail. So having said, oh, well, you had an opportunity and it was approved on a preliminary basis back then. So, you know, now hold your peace. That's that's disingenuous and unjust. And you know, I I am really impacted. And even now, I hear language, we can try to do something to mitigate the screening. I don't want you to try to do something. I want a definite commitment because we are heavily impacted by this this optimization of someone's monetization of this property. If I asked to divide my two plus acres into two building lots, there would be uproar and the board would not consider it, although it would be financially opportunistic for me. So I don't know why I have to give up my life and lose for to make this up this monetization come true for someone else. It here's the point.
So I think I will tell you that it is. So what we do is we comply with the code. The code is is legislated by the the town board and we implement it. So if there's a concern with the code, that's not something that the planning board has the ability to change. So thank you for your comments. I'm going to move, I think, to John. Sorry, I can't read from. Could you give us your address, please, John?
109 Lockwood Road.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to comment on Mr. Keller's comments, which I find, you know, rather disturbing. He's talking about ATVs in the property. First place, those ATVs get there over a public road. They are being operated by children that are basically under the age of 16. The vehicles are not registered, the operators are not licensed. And since recently, the Lewis Police has gotten involved. They have talked to the parents. They have put a stop to this practice. Mr. Moss has basically who change across the entrances to his property. And last Sunday, he has posted signs on the property. So the comment to make to make a comment like Mr. Keller made and trying to justify whatever disturbance this development is going to cause the the residents that live here by saying, well, there's already ATVs in there. That's totally a ridiculous comment. And looking at the subdivision map, all the traffic coming out of that development can really only go one way, and that is south on Lockwood Lockwood Road. There is no way they could be able to make a right-hand turn to go north on Lockwood Road. That where that road enters Lockwood Road, the private road, that's going to enter Lockwood Road, that comes out on a dead end curve. It there is the poor visibility. There have already been accidents there in the past. And if you're going to now have, you know, 13 homes there with, let's say, at least two drivers per home, that's 26 cars. You're going to have accidents there on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you.
Because you put all the stop signs in the road there because people around here do not stop for stop signs. I can tell you that. I walk these roads every day.
Okay, thank you, Jen. So Stacy.
I'm going to make it too fast. It's just a question. The I heard that there was right, a plan drawn up to show what this would look like if you took if you didn't take the cluster approach and stayed with the official. I would just love to see that. It's something I'm not. It would help me feel better to see what that would look like. Is there a way that can be posted or shared with the community?
I I know it's available in the planning board office, or at least I believe it is. I I think way back, it was probably in a in a gen and in a agenda that was posted on the website. I honestly, but I think the best thing would be to contact our planning board administrator, Kirsten. And she may, yes, who who might be able to locate one. I don't know. When it first came in, if we were doing things on PDF and if it can be shared electronically or not, honestly. So because it was a while ago. I'm sorry, someone by the name of Kathy, you are speaking.
Yes, Kathy and Jerry August. Quick question.
Okay, I'm sorry. Could you give your your name again and address, please?
Sure. Kathy and Jerry August, 24 Silver Mine Drive.
Thank you.
I've looked at all the plans and I understand the desire to create some walking trails. But I have yet to see after four years how those walking trails interact with the residents on 24 Silver Mine Drive. And I would very much like to see that. And from four years ago, the residents here on 24 Silver Mine had a concern about people trying to access those trials from the dead end street on Silver Mine. And we have requested that no parking signs be put at the bottom of Silver Mine Drive to prevent that. I have yet to understand that anyone is going to put those non parking signs in. And I've yet to see how the trails interact with the properties on 24 Silver Mine. And I would think that after four years, the Westchester Land Trust must have some idea of how they want to build those trails. So I'd like to understand what that's going to look like before the final approval is given.
Thank you. So I will just say that it is neither up to the applicant nor to the planning board to post signs on town streets. That would be possibly a town board or highway department decision. Not certainly not in something either the applicant or this this board can do.
Well, Janet, I must take you back to December meeting four years ago, where at the planning board, the planning board committed that that was an excellent idea to put no parking signs at the bottom of Silver Mine Drive. So I would like to understand how that that has disappeared after four years and why you couldn't orchestrate that or indicate to the highway department or whoever.
I hear your concern, and I think I understand the concern. I that's where I'm going to stop.
Well, when are we going to see how the walking trails are portrayed on some diagrams so that the residents on Silver Mine could see what that looks like?
I I think the planning board also has a has expressed an interest in seeing the plans for the trails, and they do not yet exist. And so that is I understand. Again, we're hearing your concerns. And I think that's that's where we are at.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you're hearing them. But what I'd like to know is what you can do about them.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. I think I've I've expressed what I can on that. Olas.
I just I want to make sure that this made it onto the record. I was asking a question in the chat to Mr. Kerner. Why why have public comment if you only care about the land? The town, the people of the town are telling you it's not the same as it was back in 2016, 2017, when these series happened. But you're choosing to ignore us and saying, well, the land is the same, so it's fine. Why bother having public comment if the land is the same?
I I'm just going to say that there the whole the whole series of codes that we have, and I thought I addressed some of this when we started out, is when you actually have a preliminary subdivision and you have a NEG deck, there are limits to what additional degrees of freedom, I'll call it, that the planning board has to make changes. So that is a, I I hear that that you or other members of the public might like to see bigger changes. But at this point procedurally, if we follow the code, if we follow the regulations that we are are tasked with abiding with, we there are limits to what we can do at this point in the process.
And Jan, as you said at the outset of the public hearing, the 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 title of preliminary plat approval is somewhat confusing. But that is a significant step toward a final subdivision approval. That's why, in fact, the the planning board could have waived this public hearing on final if it if it wanted to. Because the plan that was submitted for final approval does not vary in any substantial way from from the preliminary plat that was approved. There have been no project changes proposed by the applicant between the preliminary plat approval and today. There has been no appreciable development or change in the intensity of use in or around the the project site. This was the product of an application of the town code of the New York State Town Law. It was the the subject of a thorough examination under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. There was a negative declaration that was adopted by the planning board at the time of preliminary plat approval that went through project impact after project impact and indicated why empirically there was no significant impact on the environment as as a result of this 13 lot subdivision. A subdivision that is permitted under town code. A subdivision that as we as Jan said, as as Ms. Tortorella has said, the applicant could have come in and insisted and pushed on a conventional plat and obtained the 13 lots. It didn't do so. It was moved in that direction into the direction of clustering, really by concerns voiced by the planning board, by the CAC. And the only reason they're permitted to cluster in the in the form as proposed is because the town board gave them express authorization to do so. So, you know, I I recognize the perhaps the frustration that this public hearing comes when it does, and and we have new owners who weren't around in 2017 or who did not participate in the earlier hearings, but our code, New York State Town Law, what we've done under SECRE really places us on a you know, on a binding path. We can look at project details. But this is not a time when we can simply, you know, upend a very thorough approval process that has occurred. And you may disagree with it, but we have to work within the confines of the law as a board.
Thank you, Jed. And the one thing I would add is that the public hearing only happened because the majority of the board agreed to have a public hearing. And I think the fact that people, I I think it's a it's good because it gives us a chance to make sure that the public understands what the development is even. And and so some of these, I hope we were able to clarify some of the the decisions that have been made along the way.
Janet's hand up. Richard Aaron.
Um, I see. I'm sorry. I saw Mary Shaw. Oh, he's raising his hand. Video. Okay, go ahead. Richard. Yep, you've got to unmute.
How are you, Janet?
Good.
I didn't I didn't raise my hand. I've I'm a dinosaur when it comes to these things. I touched the wrong thing. I'm glad I wasn't at an auction. I would have bought the property. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. So any comments? No?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, Mary Shaw.
Um, thank you for letting me ask one question. With will the board, the planning board, accept written comments from the public after this is this meeting is finished?
So I we have done that in the past. When we've closed a public hearing, we have we have allowed written comments. I think one of the questions we might have among ourselves is is, and I did hear Jerome, I think, made a motion to close the public hearing. I don't think we quite got to a second. We started doing more comments. I think one of the things we should think about is that if we close the public hearing, we start a time clock. So and we do have some some discussions on the trails and on the rec fee that we need to discuss. And we might want to look for legal guidance on that. So I'm I guess I would I would look for some discussion on whether whether we should keep, I know, and and Jerry also encouraged us to close the public hearing. Judd, do you have a?
There's a there's an open motion to close.
Right.
You if if it's not seconded, it sits. If there is a desire for written comment, you we have in the past kept the public hearing open for written comment for a period of 10 to 14 days. That's an option.
Okay. So as as Judd just said, we do have a
Bruce has his hand up.
Oh, Bruce, go ahead, Bruce.
Question clarification, please, Judd. Is that 10 to 14 days after the public hearing has been closed? Or prior to closing? I I'm uncertain.
What we've what we've done is we have closed the public hearing except it it the public hearing has been the public hearing is closed, except it's it's held open for 10 days from the date of from the date of the 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 motion passes for submission of written comments. So it's held open for a period of additional 10 days, written comments only for 14 days.
Okay, then if I may, Janet, I I will, for purposes of moving this along, I will second Jerome's motion.
Okay, so
And that's that's solely to close, correct, Bruce?
That is correct.
So I will ask Jerome if you would consider amending your motion to allow for public hearing for 10 days, 14 days for public comment for 10 to 14 days.
Written comment.
Absolutely. Yeah, I would amend the motion to close with a extension of allowing for extension written comments by the public.
For how many days?
14 days is fine.
So Bruce, will you amend your second?
I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. Any comments from board members? Okay, I will poll the board. You're all moved in this. Okay, Jerome.
Hi.
Bruce.
Hi.
Greg.
Uh, yeah, I'll vote with on the amended motion.
Okay. You'll vote yes on the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay, and Okay, and um, when, did I get everybody? Me?
Probably.
Anyway, we need Charlene.
I.
Oh, Charlene, I'm sorry, Charlene, I.
It's okay, I.
And I also say aye. So the, the public hearing is closed at the um, with the uh, with, and, and the public is invited to send um, written comments to planning@lewisburg.gov.com. Um, or I guess by snail mail to the planning board. Okay, um, so we do need to discuss again the, the recreational um, fee and the trails, and I think we should um, defer that and look for legal um, guidance on that if people agree. Okay. So with that, um, we also could ask for this, a, a resolution to be um, drafted by, by Jan. Um, and I guess we do this by consensus, so I would look for thumbs up among the board to say, yes, we can do this. Okay, Greg?
Yeah, I'm just,
Yep.
Uh, just rephrase what you said.
Yes, um, looking for consensus to ask Jan to start to, or to prepare a resolution for our next meeting.
Hmm, um, no, I don't give a, I wanna hear more.
Okay. Okay, um, so I think that's what we've got now. Jed, do-
Well, you, you asked for what-
Consensus.
And so what's, what's the board?
So we have four in favor, one not in favor, so I believe we can ask Jan to start.
Yep. Yes.
Okay, so um, obviously we won't um, vote on it until we've had further discussions. Um, and that would be next time. Anything more on this, this uh, application? Okay, with that, I'm gonna move to the next item um, on our agenda, which is the site development plan review and lead agency discussion.
Thank you, good night.
Uh, thank you, Jerry. Um, this is calendar number 06-22 PB, calendar number 05-22 WP, and calendar number 03-22 SW. The Waka Buck Country Club snack bar on Perch Bay Road, Waka Buck, New York. Um, and this is an application for beachfront improvements, including renovation of a boathouse, construction of a pavilion, replacement of the snack bar, and installation of accessible parking and walkways. Okay, um, this was before us in March and April. Um, we had an April 9th site walk. Um, there's been a DEP memo and I think a pending meeting. Um, so I don't know that we have, um, well, I guess maybe, I'm looking to see who's on. Zach?
Yeah, good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, members of the board. Uh, Zach Pearson with Inside Engineering. Um, let's keep our, surveying and landscape architecture here on behalf of Waka Buck Country Club. Uh, also on the call this evening is John Doyle, the project architect from Doyle Coffin Architecture, and Peter Hall, who's a member of the club and the committee for the Beach Club. Um, just as a little bit of a recap, we, we were before you, before the April, or in the April 9th meeting, um, there were concerns raised by the, by the board, um, specifically, uh, member Thompson uh, relative to stormwater. Uh, we have completed the onsite testing, uh, witnessed by the DEP um, in support of stormwater, and it was found um, that that area that we were in to uh, install an infiltration system was not gonna work out. Uh, we also um, had the, our wetland consultant back onsite uh, to complete the floor and the fauna report, and it was found that that area, you know, there was standing water there that would be considered a wetland. So, uh, with that, uh, permission to share my screen?
Sure.
Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, yeah, as, as a recap, um, you know, we are proposing uh, the construction of a new stack shack, um, an access drive from the existing parking area down to, to uh, ADA handicap accessible parking spaces. Uh, from this location, uh, we have access to the existing main dock overlooking uh, Lake Waka Buck. Um, the new stack shack will have kitchen facilities as well as uh, handicap accessible bathrooms. Also proposing a, a ramp system to get down to the existing boathouse. Um, and then removal of an existing structure here for any, the construction of a uh, essentially a covered uh, patio area. Um, this was the area, you know, we, we had the infiltration system pushed a little closer to the property line. Um, further to the, you know, that would be to the west. Um, area was low and wet. Um, we did get out there in May, it was still wet. Uh, we did do testing in this area and we were proposing a um, micro pool extended detention pond uh, designed in accordance with the, the New York State Stormwater Design Manual. Um, we have submitted to um, the DEP for the variance application. I know that was a board, of, of the board's concern last time. We have submitted that variance application. We got a notice of incomplete application. They were looking for a few items. They wanted a copy of the EAF or a secret NEG deck, which we do not have yet. Um, they wanted a copy of our SWIP, which they're not reviewing SWIP because it does not meet their threshold, so we, we provided that to them. Uh, they were looking for um, an overlay map, um, which I'll, I'll show you guys quickly. Um, I think this, this will dovetail into something else. Uh, you know, they were looking for existing impervious inside of the 100-foot setback from the lake versus opposed, so the blue, what you see is the blue here is existing impervious inside of 100 feet. Green is the new impervious area, and then orange is um, you know, impervious area outside of the buffer. So, I know, we, we are under seat of Jan's memo, uh, current memo. I know that the, the board may still have concerns relative to this walk, you know, this walkway that was kind of making its way down. Um, I just wanna point out, you know, there is an existing driveway here now that we are removing, you know, as part of the, the project, and we're putting back this walking trail, trail down. So, yes, we are increasing near the lake with some of these other improvements, but this trail is, you know, right here where this, and this is an existing driveway that we're intending to pull out. So, I mean, uh, with that, I guess I'll turn over the board to see if any questions um, tonight. You know, we're looking for the board to declare itself the agent, uh, lead agent for the project. We did do circulation um, and potentially save a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I don't remember seeing that overlay as part of the um, submission, so if you haven't submitted it yet, please make sure that gets um, sent to Kirsten. Thank you.
Yeah, it's included, it's included in our SWIP now based on comments from the DEP, thanks, so.
Ah, okay. Um,
Zach, can you, can you expand? I think that was for the 100-foot setback for the DEP. Can you ex- extend that for the 150?
Yeah, we can absolutely, yeah, that's not a problem.
Zach, can I just add one thing there? Uh, John Doyle, John Doyle, for the record, um, that green area in, in the front of the water side of the boathouse is existing. Yeah, so that would be blue, that piece right there, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the tech, yeah, okay, yep.
Okay, good. Um, so, yes, you did bring up the um, the comment about lead to agency status. Um, I believe we have received back comments and the timeframe has passed. Um, but, so one of the things we might wanna look for um, is a motion to um, confirm our uh, our status as lead agency on this application. Okay, Jerome? Uh, you're muted, Jerome, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'm moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you, Charlene. Uh, any discussion on this? Okay, I'll poll the board. Um, Jerome?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Greg?
Yes.
Charlene?
Hi.
And I'll also say aye, so the um, motion to confirm lead agency uh, passes is approved. Um, I had a question actually on this um, this picture that we have now in front of us with the new infiltration path, um, the new detention pond, actually, I'm sorry. It's, I was wondering if there was any consideration given, even though I know it's not required, to add the, the outfall, right now there's some catch basins that go um, down and they just go to a level spreader. And I know it would take more capacity, but I don't know how much more, if that were somehow um, if those, if those catch basins could exit into the detention pond rather than just right down to the level spreader. I, I don't have any idea about the, the magnitude of the flows. Um, but I think it would get that more uh, more treatment if it could end up in the detention pond, although I could be wrong about that too.
Yeah, I mean, that is something we can look into. Um, or correct, there is, there is a bypass piping system from what comes uphill that's passed around the pond. Um, you know, we have, we have to look into what the drainage area is for that uphill and how that would affect the pond without, you know, we're trying to thread a needle here a little bit with trying to minimize our disturbance, minimize the tree removal. Um, but yeah, that, that is something we can look into and, and- Absolutely.
I just, I think it, it might, um, it might just treat a little bit more rather than, than have a level spreader that um, gets clogged up pretty fast with, with the uh, dirt coming off of the-
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and I do understand the club, you know, there, there's a potential um, East of Hudson Stormwater retrofit project that's proposed either on club property or, you know, near the corner of Perch Bay Road or some, you know, somewhere, you know, potentially just uphill of this project, so um, you know, I, we can certainly look into see what we can do to, to, to maximize health and, and benefit to the lake.
Yeah, so now that you brought that up, I had heard something about that. I don't, I don't know what that, um, I don't know if that's actually anywhere near a wetland or whether it would be part of any review or not. I, I don't know what to do about hearing that there might be East of Hudson project on this property. Uh, do you intend to fold it into this plan?
No, they, they have to, they have to be, you know, obviously if there's something happens in the future, then it would, it would have to be accommodated for this project. Um, the, the RFP that I did see, you know, looks like the improvements are more uphill, kind of all the way near Perch Bay Road and kind of adjacent to uh, where the um, the existing uh, basketball courts are. So, not anywhere, you know, the wet, you know, the wetlands are, you know, here, and we're talking above this location, which is a little cut off, but-
Right. Okay, thank you.
To, to, yeah, to look into your concern, we can certainly look to see, you know, what air, what kind of drainage area we have coming through those pipes and what we can do to potentially, you know, run those through the pond.
Okay, um.
Zach, just looking at the stormwater basin location, it's, it's kind of a bit removed from the rest of the develop, development.
Yes.
Anywhere to, to get it a little bit closer requires a bit of uh, tree removal to, to get it where it's proposed. Can you tuck it any closer to uh, the driveway?
Yeah, so again, that's also for a reason, which we're trying to stay as far away from that existing well as possible.
All right.
We still need to go to the health department and have them, you know, review the septic, um, witness testing scheduled for the perks next week. Um, the deeps were witnessed back in May when the stormwater was gone, but, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to really, you know, respect well as much as we possibly can.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Jerome?
Yes, when we were at the site, uh, there was some concern expressed about emergency vehicles coming down that curve and into the retained level parking area. Uh, and I'm still concerned that if there was an emerg, if there was a, a, two cars parked in that area, if you'd show that shaded uh, drawing you had a moment ago. Um, yeah, you've got handicap parking spaces there. Um, obviously if there's an emergency, uh, people can't get down there perhaps as quickly as they could to remove their cars or they. So I was su- suggesting that there'd be some kind of a T at that curve uh, that could also serve to access the uh, the bio retention pond, because that has to be maintained. And I'm wondering, so that wa, that way if an emergency vehicle did uh, come down to that area where you're showing a K turn occurring right now, uh, and, and the cars will park there, they could always back into that T uh, and then get up the hill uh, without to having to uh, have any of the cars parked there moved.
So, is, is something in here, Jerome, something like that?
Exactly. If you look at the other plan, you have the shaded plan, uh, which shows the bio retention. Uh, well, even that plan, you could see where you're gonna have to get access by some, with some machinery uh, to clean out that pond and to service it from time to time. And it might also serve as a, just to pull out, uh, serve both functions.
I mean, we did provide the turning study, you know, the merge, fire trucks, we're, we're visioning, we're not coming down here, you know, fire trucks, we showed, you know, up in this location, turning around, fire turn around.
Right. What about an ambulance?
Uh, the turning study was, was for a larger, a larger suburban slash larger truck. You know, it wasn't a, it wasn't a small vehicle, so.
Right, but suppose an ambulance came down there and there were two handicap spaces filled?
Well, we showed, we showed, we showed the possibility of them turning around, even using striped area beside the um, interspaces. So we did, you know, this is turning around at one spot, this is turning around in the other spot, and this is turning, and using striped area, you know, to the west of the, the west, westernmost handicap spot to turn around there.
Okay.
Tried to use all three, again, trying to minimize impervious surfaces and things like that, but we can certainly take a look at it.
Well, but in reality, you're gonna have to get access over to that bio retention pond. I'm not sure Jan could speak to the necessity to get over there during its functioning.
It's a requirement. We, we do need to provide a, a path, but I mean, it's not a hard surface. It can, you know, we've done them by just um, other site plans we've done, we've, we've just showed where the path is. It's a painful way misses trees and it doesn't, you know, it's great, you're, you're gonna use a, a small mini excavator, something like that for maintenance, so.
Okay, okay. Good enough.
Thanks.
Bruce, uh, thank you. Uh, Bruce, I thought you had your hand up too? Yep.
Yeah, yes, I do. Um, I've got a question for Zach. Uh, Zach, uh, after the site walk in April, um, John Suma was um, kind enough to let me come back uh, a couple of days later. And I wanted to check where that rock outcropping is, uh, where the, uh, that just is tangent to the uh, proposed road coming down. There's a seep uh, that was active at that time. Um, and so my question to you, that's all, yes, that's correct, right at the, at the, the uh, point of the rock. Uh, and my concern would be that in that area, I believe, I forget the station, there was gonna be a two-foot cut, which is gonna make it, that water that was coming out of the ground then all the more likely to be problematic when that cut is made. So, I'm curious as to whether or not you're, you're gonna have any provision for a curtain drain or some kind of drainage along that um, outside uh, radius of that uh, that drive to pick up that water and take it to a desirable place for uh, discharge.
Sure, I mean, there's a pretty, you know, that's something we can look into, absolutely, you know, it would, it would seemingly be a pretty simple solution. We, we, we have to strike here, right? You know, we could run, it's a little, little tricky getting around the rock, you know, we're trying to get around it, you know, here to kind of keep it as a feature. Um, but, you know, we could certainly get from this location into that structure, something like that.
Uh, I, like I said, um, I actually even took a picture of it uh, just to show you that, how active that was at that time. So, as we all know, um, those kinds of uh, conditions at that time of year tend to repeat from year after year. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm raising it not because I think it's impossible to provide for, but uh, as a uh, recommendation to provide for.
Sure.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, um, I think the other- I think the other thing, actually, if you slide up this a little bit along the top, towards upper, towards up, toward going uphill, yeah, there's a couple of things. One is that I think there was a rather large, this came up in the CAC memo, a rather large tree that they were interested in preserving. I don't know whether you've looked at that.
Yeah, it, it's unfortunate, it's not overlaid, but I can show you which one it is. It's, there's a, it's tree 21, which is right here with this cluster of three trees, thirty inch. It was just beside this garden. And unfortunately, it's right where the driveway peels off to get down to the lower, you know, it's, it's directly across from the existing parking lot at the elevation, you know, of that parking lot, which establishes the start of the road, which establishes, you know, we have a set grade, I think, of the, I believe it's 12%. A trever comes down to 12% now. You know, if we were to go further uphill, obviously we wouldn't want to increase the length, so then the driveway would get steeper. You know, that would be a, you know, not an ideal situation. Yeah. So like that, that tree kind of sits like right in here, right where this road kind of peels off, off of the existing driveway.
Sorry to interrupt Janet, but Zach, could you provide an additional sheet or an exhibit that shows the true removal plan on top of your grading plan?
Sure, absolutely.
No, that's good, Jan. So the other thing I think is, in Jan's memo, there's a path that goes through a small wetland and yeah, I think that's a little higher up. Right. And I just, I think his point about that being potential for good mitigation, I don't know what I don't know how steep or anything it is, if you can.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can go to the grading plan. I don't think, I think it kind of cuts parallel along the contours. You know, I don't think, it's just kind of, from my, from memory, it goes right off of the driveway. Takes its way across, like on the same contour, right?
Right. So, okay, that, I think that would be I don't know, something to protect the wetland there would, would be good or good mitigation.
We can work that through with the club.
All right. So other, if there aren't any other comments from board members, perhaps I'll ask Jan to, to kind of hit the highlights about what has to happen. Still from the memo that you've got.
Sure. A video on, yes. Procedurally, you took, you took care of business tonight with the declaration lead agency. You know, there are, there are a number of outside agency approvals, including the ZBA, Acarc, the DEP, the Health Department, the DC, SHIPO. So, you know, as you evaluate the project under SECR, you'll be responsible for preparing the declaration. The applicant submitted the long form EAF, we had provided some comments on that, they've submitted part one of the EAF so far. And in our memo, we, we requested that they take the first cut at preparing part two, which is really the, the planning board's document, but we oftentimes have the applicant plead it for board review and perhaps at your next meeting, you can go item by item and, and just evaluate the project under the part two EAF and start determining significance. We had asked previously for a cut and fill calc. I noted that it was indicated in the cover memo that it was supplied. I, if it's there, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, we, we're going to respond to your comments, Jan, and you'll have it next Tuesday, for sure. It'll, if it's not there already. I don't, I don't think we got to, because I think we move, we were moving stuff all the way up until the end. So I just don't think we got to it, but quickly, I believe we have Acarc. John Doyle will be able to speak that. I think we have that approval and we just got a, a letter from SHIPO, I think yesterday, so we will forward that along with our submission back to you guys. They came back and had, I think their only comment had to do with trying to maintain a couple of the northern windows and the look of the northern windows on the boathouse. That was, that was kind of it from them.
We, we had some comments about the tree removal, trying to evaluate the tree removal, comparing it to what's being proposed as replacements. We didn't mention the 30 inch elm tree, which was just discussed. And, and we just identified some areas that could potentially be locations for additional tree replacement. We did identify that the, the proposed walkway, you know, is in an area of steep slopes. I know there's a driveway there, but it adds to the net increase in impervious cover on the site within the buffer. And it seems like if you were trying to reduce impacts in an impervious cover, that would be a candidate for removal, just because it could be incorporated into the driveway. There is other ways to get down to the snack bar. I know there's some existing walkways, they're not any accessible, but you have the new driveway. I know they're concerned about strollers and such, but you know, obviously a board call, but if there was, seemed to be a lot of concern about the extent of disturbance in the buffer and it seemed like that, that was on potential for being considered for removal. So we pointed that out. There has been, there's a a schedule for a conceptual landscaping plan that was submitted. We're looking for, you know, a true wetland mitigation plan that provides one to one mitigation for wetland buffer disturbances. We previously talked about, one of the items could be maybe trying to reroute that trail through that small pocket wetland, but there needs to be a comparison towards the buffer disturbance and, and wetland mitigation. It's comment number eight.
Yep.
Let's see, I don't know that I need to go through any of these. The remainder of them deal with stormwater and sounds like you're on top of that, so I won't, I won't go through those comments.
Hey, great. So I think what I heard, Zach, is you are going to have another submission for us for next month.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have Jan's comments, we did get, you know, SHIPO approval or a letter from them, we're going to submit that, you know, part two of the EAF. And, and, you know, basically, you know, what, what we heard from the board tonight and get those addressed.
Great, thank you. John, go ahead. I see John Wolf has a.
Yeah, I think one of the points that the CAC letter made is we'd like to see the mitigation be much stronger in terms of replacing the trees, not, you know, not just, you know, there, there's something like 56 trees being removed. And we'd like to see something more equal on, on that. You know, for cover and for the root system or the water going into the, the lake. So we'd like to see a stronger mitigation with tree plantings. I think that's a key point.
Thank you, John. Jan, were you going to say something more?
I was, but I can't remember what it was.
Okay.
It must not have been too important.
Okay. So I think that's it for this then, right? Anything else?
I just, quick question. So in Jan, in your memo, you did note that we, we need, you know, we need to go to the ZBA. At what point?
Yeah, that was it. That was the comment.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
At what point can we go to the ZBA and start the process there? There's the, you know, there's the, the club aspect being non-conforming in the zone, which you kind of addressed earlier in the meeting with the club, you know, in addition there. And also I think there's a couple of setback issues relative to the, the boathouse.
I think you're free to go.
Okay.
From the building inspector.
But, but keep in mind, because it's a coordinated review and we're lead agency, you can start that process, but they're not going to be able to do anything until a determination of significance is made by the planning board's lead agency. So it, it doesn't stop you from starting the process, but that, you know, there's going to be a holdup until the secret process runs, runs its course.
And we need the part two of the EAF to start looking at that in order to get to the neg deck. Okay. Great.
Zach, maybe before you submit, I don't know where your, what your deadline is, but perhaps we could have a staff meeting. I also just need to run out there and confirm the wetland boundary. I know I've been back with, with you guys and with Jim, try to find a date, but I got to get out there.
Okay. Yeah, let us know. I, I think the submission deadline is Tuesday, right? It's the 28th, I believe, a week from today.
Yeah.
I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So if you could stop screen sharing, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. See, WV, this is the Shilki Residence, Three Beaver Pond, South Salem, New York. And there's an application for remediation of wetlands. And I think we're on really for control, a control date to see where we stand and if there's, if there can be a report of any progress. And I see Mr. Shilki's on.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, I have since started doing something, not much of the planting. I wanted to make sure that I had approval to start doing it first realistically, but I did the wildflower meadow, that's already done. It was just the planting of the shrubs and the trees, so I just wanted to know that I didn't need exact placement or if I was okay to start planting and that's all I wanted. I talked to Steve today and he said for me to start planting. So.
Okay. Do you have a sense as when you'll be able to have it all finalized so it can get reviewed and we can close this out?
If you give me a month or so, I think that should be good.
And so would that say, I don't know, come back for the August 16th meeting or?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
I think we just check the, check the, the wetland permit application just to make sure there's not supposed to be a pre-construction meeting or any sort of meeting to review the site before the plantings go in. I know you have the permit, we issued it, but I, sometimes there's a a meeting that takes place with me and Steve and yourself just to to go over the plan before installation. So just check that, that permit to see if that condition exists. I was looking for the permit while we're on here, but I can't get, I can't get it up. Can't get it on the screen.
Jan, Jan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it looks like condition five prior to the installation of any planting material, including seeding, the subject property shall be inspected by the town wetland inspector.
Yeah, so we, we should have that meeting before you go any further with the planting, so we can ensure all the whip chips are gone and.
I had a feeling that there was something in there that said that, so I hadn't started the planting. So when would you like to come by?
Shoot me an email tomorrow and we'll schedule something for early next week, so it doesn't hold you up.
All right, cool.
Okay, great. So that shouldn't, that I don't think, I would hope that shouldn't delay anything any longer and we can still plan to see you in August, but if necessary, let us know and we'll push you off till September, but I think it sounds like we can make it in August, right?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 72-21 WP, calendar number 21-21 SW. This is the Dayton Pool and Patio, 62 Mead Street in Waukeah, New York. It's an application for courtyard, including a new pool, fire pit and pavers. And Kathleen, yes, okay. You used to be on that side of the screen, everything, everybody moved.
I know, right? That's the problem. Everybody puts their hands up and then it changes order. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Gallagher with Insight Engineering, Serving and Landscape Architecture. I'm here on behalf of the applicant for the Dayton Residence. I'm going to share my screen. The project at 62 Mead Street was last in front of the planning board, I believe it was December of last year. The project is in front of the board for a town wetland permit and a stormwater permit. Just friendly reminder that we have our 150 foot wetland buffer located at this green line here. The project consists of a re, improvements and a rehabilitation of the courtyard, which is located just south of the existing residence. The courtyard will have new pavers, a new pool, some additional landscaping. The project also includes a mudroom addition to the existing house, which is the only improvements to the existing residence. The garage and the house will remain the same for the purposes of the review of this board. And the improvement of the garage, which we're calling the garage slash grotto for this area. It also includes stormwater management practices and some wetland mitigation for the project. Since the last time we were in front of the board, we did get a variance from the zoning board of appeals for the floor area for the permitted accessory structure, which is the garage and the grotto that was granted on April 27th. The applicant has also received a determination from Westchester County Department of Health of no objection to the garage improvements and also just stating that the house still continues to remain the five bedroom house. We did just receive this today. So we haven't been able to forward it to the planning board, but we did want to show it to you that we were able to, to acquire a, a no objection determination. Changes to the drawings since the last time you've seen the drawings include additional tree protection mitigation, some additions of plantings for the mitigation area. We did include service berries, which are located on basically either side of the mitigation here and here. And that was in response to one of the comments of making sure that the additional mitigation area wasn't going to be accidentally mowed. There is a really large meadow area that's here, so we're just really kind of connecting that meadow area into the stone wall located at this location. And then we'll have something a little more vertical in those areas to prevent mowing in potential accidental mowing. Also, we clarified some of the additional utilities on site coming in and out of the garage as well as the location of the well is now specified on the drawings and we can see our horizontal offset as well. Our latest application also included additional architectural drawings, more detailed plans of the garage and the mudroom for clarification, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the board. I do believe the wetland permit may require a public hearing. And so the request is just a discussion of if the board still feels that that is needed for the process. The last submission we did give included letters from the neighbors stating that they had no objection to the improvements on site. And if one is required, we would just request that that be scheduled for the next meeting.
Okay. So one of the things I noticed is that the driveway area is all going to be asphalt with gravel on top. So that seems like a lot of impervious surface, you know, addition, because I think it was just gravel before and am I correct? Is there, is there a way that any of that could be permeable paving of some sort?
It was gravel before. I, off the top of my head, do not know what the material underneath it was. If it was something that was pervious, it, it may have been pretty compacted. If it wasn't like asphalt, it was probably pretty compacted dirt. After all these years, I wouldn't imagine that it's functioning in accordance with any sort of perviousness. We are accommodating for the increase in impervious surface with additional stormwater management practice, including the infiltration. I think their concern is the existing gravel that was there was loose and it's much more difficult, you know, on cars and for children to be running around. The owners do have a young child. And the potential for kids will throw, you know, whatever they can. I think they were just looking for something a little more sturdy that wasn't, I'm going to be able to move and, and to be a continuation of the existing asphalt. The driveway is an existing asphalt in that area. They didn't want it to be asphalt for aesthetic purposes, but they were hoping for it to be something a little more stable than what's there now.
But I think one of the things that used to have sort of a garden area or a a circular thing and that has gone away. I know there's more, I, so. I would be willing to see this go administrative, which would mean you wouldn't have to come back to us at all. If there was a way to take maybe some of that impervious surface away. And, and I don't, you know, there are these paver blocks, there, there's all sorts of alternatives that, you know, might still be similar function, but if it could be made pervious in any way, I, I'd like to see just, I don't know, a small section.
Even if it's just a portion, it's, it is something we can discuss with the homeowners. I, I do believe that they would like this process to, to proceed as efficiently as possible. And if that means that some of this becomes a little more pervious, I think they'd be willing to entertain that.
So I, I guess I look to the rest of the board for your comments on that. I, I'm yes, we're all in the one corner. Okay, any, any comments? Jerome, I think you're muted. Oh, go ahead, Charlene.
I very much agree with that. It's the impervious surface that somewhat concerns me.
Would you be willing to see it go admin if they, if as part of it, they said we, they look to be able to reduce, I don't know, even 10%, I think would make me happier.
I would be in favor. I would agree with that.
Yes. Okay. Um. Bruce?
Yeah, this came up before I joined the board, I believe. And so I'm pretty unfamiliar with it, but I don't, certainly don't have any objection to the direction that you're suggesting, Janet.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to move this to administrative process with, well, I guess I should ask Jan first. Would that be all right with you?
Yes, okay with me. The only two comments we had was the health department, which has been resolved, and just depicting the five service berries on one of those sheets.
Which we will clarify on the next mission.
Great, no problem. Thank you.
So, okay, so I'd look for a motion to move to make this administrative with the, with the provision that effort be made to make some of the current impervious driveway more permeable. I saw.
I would second.
And Jerome seconds. Okay, any more discussion?
Well, I have one, you know, just in terms of looking for a logical cutoff or place to change. I see a gate that leads toward the garage and towards the more private. That gate, if that gate's kept closed, that certainly looks like an area that could remain asphalt, impervious asphalt. Or some such treatment that it's a, no, it's a different, it's a line of demarcation that could be changed, you know, without affect, affecting the aesthetics of the front courtyard.
Yeah, my initial review is I agree, there is the potential for this, which has a nice cutoff. There's also the potential for this area, which is outside of the main vehicular traffic of them coming in and out of the garage. And it also has the potential.
That's actually where I was looking, is thinking, well, if they're not parking as much or driving as much there, maybe that would, could become a little bit more of a, you know, occasional parking could handle a little bit different, something, I don't know. But yes, we leave it to your discretion and to work with Jan on that. So we have a motion, we have a second, any, any other discussion? Okay, I'll poll the board. Jerome?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
So I'll also say aye, so the motion carries, and this will be handled administratively. Thank you, Jan. And thank you very much, Kathleen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a site visit report. This is calendar number 15-22 WP, calendar number 07-22 SW. The Reenie Lango Residence on 15 Benedict Road, South Salem, New York, and application for garage, cabana, pool, and patio. So I will start a site walk report, and others who attended can can comment. So the site walk took place at 15 Benedict Road, South Salem, New York, on June 18th, 2022. From, the applicant had James and Liz Reenie there, Ken Anderson, Alan Pilch, and Michael Sirianni. From the planning board, it was myself, joined by Charlene and Bruce. And from the CAC, John Wolf, Sally Frank, and Val Andes. Upon arrival, we walked up an asphalt driveway to an area that's currently gravel. We saw that the extent of the garage and cabana and porch and pergola was staked. We saw that the property drops off very steeply to the Waukeahuck River behind a fence that was described as about 10 feet from the property line. The majority of the building would be on areas that's currently grass or driveway. The pool would go into a garden. The entire area to be developed is within the wetland buffer. The driveway would extend back almost to the fence, which would remove some beech trees and sparse undergrowth. And would end up being perched on top of this pretty steep slope to the river. Asphalt would replace the current gravel driveway. The pool was staked, and we noticed that it was set quite a distance from the house, and an impervious patio area would extend from the house to the pool and run along the sides of the pool. Went to the far side of the house and saw the approximate location of the patio expansion, expansion on the side of the house. And the approximate areas of the septic systems that serve the cottage and the main house, and the proposed infiltration area for the, sorry, proposed area for the infiltration units were shown to us. We also walked to observe the wetland in the front of the house. Again, that's down a very steep drop from the lawn area and is pretty wooded and well protected there. We were also shown the area of the existing asphalt driveway that would be removed once the new mudroom and porch were added to the side of the house. So I think that's what we saw. I don't know if anyone wants to make any additions or comments. My comment would be that it seemed like this was a pretty aggressive use and, and that some of the the paving went to what I would consider pretty close to that steep slope down to the, the river, which was a little concern. I know that the the applicant wanted 30 feet to back out of their garage, so I ended up going and measuring my backing out of my garage, and it's about 20 feet. So, I mean, maybe even taking it to 25 feet or so. It just seemed like everything was as I observed it. I, I was concerned about the total amount of impervious, but also how close it went to the, the top of this steep slope that goes down to the river. I don't know, any other, any comments from anybody other, Charlene or Bruce who also were on the walk?
I guess it was the impervious surface again that was concerned to me. The amount of it increased.
Yeah, we did ask whether or not the pool could be pulled a little closer to the house, because it seemed like in addition to the pool, there was a lot of impervious between the house and the pool. Okay, I, I don't know. Bruce?
Yeah, I think it's fair to comment that the, they're eliminating a fair amount of driveway going up the other side of the house also. And in the course of doing that, they're making it possible to have a much improved expansion area for their existing septic. And that, to me, is a huge plus for them. The the, so far as, is backing out, I, I don't know, a lot has to do with the size of your vehicle. And making a three-point turn is, can be a bit frustrating at times, and especially in the winter time when you've got snow piled up too. So I, I was, I was taken by the how stable the, the site was. There were no signs of erosion, and, and it didn't appear to me that the new construction would result in a degradation of that. So I, I, I didn't see anything that was particularly alarming to me about the proposal.
Go ahead, Jerome.
Yeah, well, I wasn't at the site walk. I, I was out of town at that time. But I do recall a favorable opinion I had of the addition because of the its location within an already, what seemed to be an already impacted portion of the site. So, and I think that's a big consideration. They weren't disturbing anything outside of what had already been disturbed, for the most part.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I think there's some very, there are positives to the design. So I just, that's, that's kind of my feedback is, again, the, the the biggest concern I had was where it was really close to the steep slope going down to the 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 river and the overall amount of impervious, although, you know, I understand that. Yeah. There's, there's quite, you know, there's, there's a lot going on there, and they're, they're trying to make a very nice a series of additions really to the house. Go ahead, Charlene.
Um, Bruce, did you know, I know they're getting rid of the driveway in the front. I don't remember if that was asphalt or not. I know that the present driveway right now is, is gravel. And that's really the issue. I know that for the children, they don't want it all gravel, because there's issues with that. But as Jan said in the other, in the other case, there are other materials that can be used. And I was wondering if it'd be possible in this case to.
So we don't really have an application in front of us. I think this was, I mean, a submission right now in front of us. This was a reaction to the site walk, giving our feedback. So I just, I think you know, it's, it's reaction, and we will see, you know, if you can have a new submission for us. Or I, I know there were some discussions about small changes at the, at the site walk. You know, give our comments there, and, you know, we might not all be in agreement with it. Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, if I can add this, you know, the longer path of, that you give water to drain, the better, generally, the better it is, because you can overcome steep slopes that way by giving water a broader path to take. And I'd like to see what they propose for the grading of that impervious area at the top, because I think that that could make a big difference in it as well. So.
Fair enough.
That I, I just, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Well, I, I know there's no application before you, but we assure you we're listening. James Reenie is tuned in. I see Alan Pilch is tuned in. Obviously, I am. And we're going to take a look at some of these concerns that you've expressed, or this is why we wanted you to come out to the site. We thank you all for taking time on a holiday weekend to do that.
Well, thank you for, well, thanks to the, James for hosting us, and, okay, so.
Janet, before you move on, I was not able to make the site walk. If Alan can reach out to me and find a day to walk the property together, I'd appreciate it. And there should be a, a pre, or there should be a meeting with staff before there's a resubmit. Please keep that in mind before you resubmit.
Jan, if I can add, they hadn't dug the test holes yet either, so.
That's fine. That'd be somebody different from the office that would inspect those, that, that would comment, but I haven't been to the site yet, and I'd like to walk it.
Very good. Alan will try to get on your agenda this, for this Thursday, if you have room.
Yeah, just have Alan reach out and try to find a date that works, make sure that, what Thursday looks like.
Okay. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the, is under correspondence is a referral from Wilton, Connecticut, the Inland Wetlands Commission. The Amadeo Residence at 101 Silver Spring Road, Wilton, Connecticut. It's an application for proposed driveway reconfiguration, septic modification, and new infiltration system. And this is referred to us because it's actually on the border with our town. You know, and I looked at it, and I might have some comments, but I really think what I would say back, what I would recommend that we send, agree to say back to the town board, who will get back in touch with them, is that we have no comments, and we'll let the, Wilton, Connecticut Inland Wetlands Commission deal with this, not, not us. I we don't know their approaches and laws, so I think we just leave it at that. So if you agree. Oh, Judd, I forgot. Do I need a?
A motion authorizing you to sign a letter to the town board to that effect?
Yeah, so, so authorizing.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll poll the board. All in favor, Jerome?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
Greg?
Yes.
And Charlene?
Aye.
And I also say aye, so thank you. We'll get that letter out.
Talking about Wilton, just, I know it's late, but I wonder if, Jan, was that wave pool slash therapy pool ever built?
Oh, yeah. It's, it's, it has not received a certificate of occupancy yet, but it's, it's built, and there, we're going through the final inspections.
Amazing. For those board members that weren't here at that time, it's the pool, it's a private pool that was larger than our town pool.
It's the third largest in the US, actually, I think, and it is.
900,000 gallons of water.
Where?
In the town of Wilton, but we, we had it before us for the infrastructure crossing wetlands in the town of Lewisboro.
Right. And it, well, so you might not have heard, I'm sorry to do this, but when they turned it on, it actually dimmed all the lights in the neighbors, and the and the, and the electric company couldn't get out there fast enough, so the owner actually paid for new electric services to, like, the whole community. So, yeah, anyway. The next item.
Well, I just have to say that when the application came before us, it was labeled as a therapy pool. And I think after two or three meetings, the second meeting, I had seen an article in the New Yorker magazine about wave pools, which are being built because the Summer Olympics now have surfing. And wave pools have been being built throughout Texas and inland areas so that kids that want to learn to surf and to compete can do it inland and not wait for the ocean exposure. Amazing.
And the only reason we got to see it is because of this little wetland crossing. I mean, if it hadn't been that, it could have been built without, anyway. All right. The next item on our agenda is calendar number 10-15 PB, calendar number 20-17 WP, calendar number 5-17 SW. This is Lewisboro Commons, otherwise known as Wilder Balder, at 100 Beekman Lane, Goldens Bridge, New York. And this is a request that we received to amend condition 67 in the resolution granting site development plan approval, wetland permit activity, and I'm sorry, approval and town stormwater permit of February 26, 2019. So this is really, I think, driven by uh communication between the fire department and the owners of the Lewisboro Commons to change some of the the stand pipes and the sprinklers in the attics. So perhaps um John, you wanna tell us a little bit about it?
Sure. Good evening, and um it's nice to see all your faces and uh it was interesting uh last hour or so I was listening in. Um, so it's uh seems to be uh continuing to stay busy. So uh, yes, we by way of a little, just a quick little background, um, we're coming quickly here to um to a place we're gonna be hopefully ready for occupancy. Um, we did have um the application process and and our lottery done, and there were over eighteen hundred applications for forty-two units, which is incredible. Um, and um, we uh met with the fire department, the the pretty much the entire fire department came out. Um, some members of the district as well. Um, they were pleased with uh with the construction, um with the um sprinkler systems that have been installed in accordance with code. Um, the separate uh water um system that's that's detached from uh from the sprinkler systems, the twenty-five thousand gallon tank, you may recall, uh that's on the site um that the fire department has use of uh to fight fires both on the site or um if they want to take water um off the site. Um, so during that that walkthrough, uh they made it clear to us that they did not want us to install um the dry systems in the attic. Uh, they expressed some concern about um having two separate stand pipes and um and uh um, we're we're, you know, we're amenable to that um to remove those. We had installed it in the first building. Um, and we were preparing to install it in the balance of the buildings and um we took their direction and and uh stopped. So um, there is there is the provision in the resolution that made it a condition of approval. Uh, so when it conferred with um with staff, they indicated that the they probably need to uh take the the uh go through the process of uh amending that uh formally, and that's why we're here this evening.
Okay, so I think what we really want to do is um uh if the board agrees, we'll ask Yan to um amend the resolution in accordance with the wishes of the fire department. So um I'd look for consensus unless you have questions, I guess. I'd look for consensus to ask Yan to um prepare that resolution for next month.
Have we seen anything from the fire department on this?
I had gotten a um an email, Greg, from Rob Malillo. Um, that and I don't know, Kirsten, if you received the same email. I think it was sent just to me and then I I think I deferred him to you and the building inspector, but he wrote to me and said, you know, hey, we don't, we don't want these uh dry, the dry sprinkler system in the attics. The rest of the building, you know, the main floors are fully sprinkled, but there was this condition in the resolution that states um each building shall be equipped with an additional fire connection and dry line to service the sprinkler heads in building attics. Um, and I had thought that that condition came from originally a request of the fire department. Uh, I'm not sure. I don't I forget how it got in there. Uh, Rob, on behalf of the fire district, I guess, made it known that they prefer not to have that line in there if it was not connected to the main system. Um, just, I guess, for their own, yeah, just how they operate. So um since.
Can that be part of this application?
No.
Why?
What, the email, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, anything from the fire department.
Yeah, yeah. If Kirsten, do you have that email? If not, I could circulate it to the board tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Okay, I have it, Greg. I'll I'll if you don't have it, I'll circulate it. Yeah, but the request came from Rob Malillo.
It it's it seems to me, Yan, that uh that's outside of the scope of the board. In any event, I mean, it's a building code issue and it's between the building inspector and the fire department. And uh especially if they're now confirming that they don't want it, uh as opposed to me.
Well, I haven't seen it. No one's seen it. We're just we're just hearing the applicants, you know, and I think it should be part of the application. Certainly not outside of our scope under those circumstances.
No, I hear you.
I have no objection to it. And just just for the record, when I when I sent the letter to your board, I copied the chief's. And, you know, we've we've been we've been communicating with the fire department now for some time. Um, we've given them the opportunity, as we had promised, to uh locate uh Knox boxes, trust placards. Um, we've conferred with them on connections for um for the fire hydrants and for the um for the uh the separate uh fire suppression system. So um, you know, they're they're very clear. I copied them. I copied the chief's. Honestly, the chiefs had been telling me um earlier in the process that they really didn't want these things installed. They had reconsidered. Um, and, you know, I was I was in the I was in the mindset that, listen, it was a condition of the resolution, and I was just gonna go forward. Um, but when they came out, they really they really don't want them. So um we're we're prepared to uh to remove what's been installed and um in the one in the one building and not install them in the balance.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, the first we heard about this was Thursday?
I think we had gotten an earlier memo and I don't know where it went. I think it was, didn't I I'm not sure.
I mean, on Thursday, I saw a reference to um a memo. It was Friday, going back to May, but I I didn't see that memo. And then we saw that they wanted to be put on this agenda for on on Friday for, you know, for Tuesday's agenda, and I still don't see anything from the fire department.
Okay, so clearly, I think we'll ask Yan to circulate the the email that he got, but I thought we had gotten something some time ago, and then it sort of disappeared, and I think we forgot about it, but maybe I could be wrong.
I think that's I think that's correct. I think John had sent an email to the board some time ago. Um, it just got lost in the shuffle and then he he contacted um me either this earlier this week or last week and said, what's going on with this? And I said, oh, we have to bring it before the board. It it needs to be um addressed in a by the board in an amendment. Um, so he asked John to recirculate his initial request. Um, that went to Kirsten and then we added it to the agenda for correspondence, certainly not any sort of decision, but just to have this conversation. So that that's as much as I know.
Yan, you saw the fire.
I was also involved in the conversation with the with the fire department as well. Just to confirm that the that the fire suppression systems that are installed meet code, which had been confirmed at the time of um site plan approval, again, at building the corp at uh building permit issuance. And um and again now. I'm sorry.
Yan, did you have a discussion with the fire department and and receive that note from the fire department?
I received the initial email from Rob making the request to remove the systems and then like Jerome said, well, that's probably a fire or building inspector item, forgetting that that was a condition in the resolution. Uh, so yes, I have seen the email from Rob, and I will make sure if you don't have it that you um you have it in your.
If you saw it and that's what it says, I I'm okay with that.
Well, let me, I did. This is just for a discussion item, so if there's no action tonight, uh we would have to prepare a resolution anyway, so I'll I'll circulate it so everybody has it.
Okay.
So in the meantime, in the meantime, uh we could request, John, you could request or Yan, something in writing from uh the fire chief, and that would satisfy Greg's uh concern, just to have it in the in the file.
Well, I think we should ask for a resolution anyhow and and plan to, okay, so.
Let's have the doc, the paperwork.
Okay. So um, we've agreed to to ask for that to be written? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Yan. Um, and we'll see you in July.
Thank you. Apologize for the uh for the for the hat, but just coaching a little baseball today.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. So we have, I'd look for approval for the minutes of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Some.
Thank you, Charlene. Um, okay, I'll second it. Oh, go ahead, Jerome.
Second.
All right, um, any discussion on the minutes? I'll pull the board. Um, Jerome?
Yes.
Bruce?
Hi.
Greg?
Yes.
And Charlene?
Hi.
And I also say aye, so the minutes are approved. Um.
Motion for German?
No, we need to uh have this discussion about the uh silver mine. So we can either have it in public-ish now and have it streamed to YouTube, or we can um, I I actually am gonna make this. I'll move to convene an executive session of the board for the purpose of obtaining attorney advice and to appoint Judd Seibert to take minutes at this executive session.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh.
Janet, I'm gonna drop off unless you need me at the exec session.
I think we're okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Stay on for a moment, Yan, because, I mean, I I object to the executive session. I feel like we could deal with it transparently, and it seems to me that's the the key question is, is uh is uh a walking trail or satisfactory in lieu of a playground or any other forms of uh of recreation? And and that's the only question, whether a trail is uh equal to in uh any other form of.
Well, I think there's some discussion about the financial um.
And and Jerome, I have I have through some of the emails, I've received some questions that just touch on some legal issues relating to the rec fee.
Okay, I.
It won't be long.
Yeah, so I uh remove the objection.
So we have to go to a breakout session again, which I forget how to do.
Not at all.
Good night, Yan.
Okay, good night, Yan. Happy happy summer.
My co-host.
I so.
Uh, yeah, I am co-host, so I'll make a we just want to be all in one room, in a separate breakout room.
So.
Right.
The motion, the motion.
Oh, I made a motion. Did anybody second it?
Second.
Charlene did, okay. Any, uh, we have to vote on it. Can we, since it's only just us, can we just say aye? Aye.
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 And.
Okay, we're going to a breakout room. What happened?